Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order. Today is April 27th, 2021, and we are starting our meeting today at 7:05 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law issued March 12th, 2020, the April 27th, 2021 meeting of the PBD School Committee will be held in the library of the Higgins Middle School for school committee members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and central office administrators as requested by the superintendent. Today, we have our full school committee. We have Superintendent Dr. Josh Fadala, our Assistant Superintendent Dr. Chris Lord, and our business manager, Mr. Joe Scanlon, with us. In accordance with the governor's order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, the regular meeting of the PBD School Committee will not allow in-person attendance. I think we're breaking our own rules today, apparently, to members of the public. We can actually change this now, I think. We've got to change this. So I'm going to stop reading that. And today, we are being televised live on PBD Access TV. Real-time public participation can be addressed to the PBD School Committee utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The application will allow users to view the meeting and make a comment during public participation, and that feature will continue, at least for the foreseeable future with our meetings. Those, as typical of this past year, those that would like to speak, please raise your hand, and Dr. Fadala can recognize you and we can bring you on for public participation. I'd like to start the meeting. If everybody could please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you. And if there's no objection, we have some special guests here today, and I wanted to turn it over to Dr. Fadala so he can introduce who we have with us today. Some special recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, we had four teams participate in Destination Imagination, and each year, we have a number of teams that participate. This year was a little bit special because we have teams that have advanced further than any team has before. So just a little quick overview about Destination Imagination. So it is a STEAM-based challenges, and as you know, we put an A in STEM, so it's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The A is now for art, so they have many art-based challenges as well. And so Destination Imagination creates open-ended challenges, and they enable students to learn and experience the creative process, and they try to foster creativity, curiosity, and courage. And so our students in PBD have been competing in Destination Imagination against students from all over the world. And our district coordinator for Destination Imagination is Diane Bugler from the Brown School, and Diane's been doing it for many years and has seen a lot of success. So the first group that I'd like to call up is the Brown School, our fifth graders. They conducted an engineering challenge called Built to Last, and they had to design and create a 3D model, and they had to do a video. And you'll see, here's our picture of our students, Ryan, Eric, Tyler, Cameron, and Nathan, and they were managed by Sandy DeSilva. And you can see that this 3D model that they built, and they won and have advanced to the Global Finals, which will be a virtual competition held in June. So, boys, if you can come up, we'd like to recognize you along with Mr. Silva, and we have some medals and a trophy that we'd like to present to this team. And is there someone who can tell us a little bit about your project?
We built the Louvre Museum. It was, it's in France, Paris. We built self-portraits of ourself, and we we made some sculptures ourselves. We used our imagination to put it all together.
Excellent, great job. And they competed against kids all across the country, and they finished first place, and they're going to the Global Finals. This is the first time a PBD team has ever qualified for the Global Finals, and so it's going to be a whole international competition. So really impressive, great job. And this is the first time we've ever had a fifth-grade team, or any team for that matter, go. And so we're really proud of this group, and we just want to thank you for all the hard work that you've done.
Great job.
Great. We have the big trophy.
Yeah, come on, please.
We'll take the picture.
Want to stand in front of that?
Yeah, let's stand in front of that. So come over here, boys.
I have Mrs. Bugler on the phone, so I want to she is actually taking a course right now at night, and that's why she couldn't be here.
Oh, that's cool.
Good job, boys. There you go. Smile, I would say.
Awesome. Great job.
Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. And not to be outdone, we had a group from the Higgins that also competed, and they placed first. So they competed in an improvisational challenge called Case Closed, and this was to create an improv video where they had to research forensic science, and then they had to tell a story about a detective and their sidekick as they had to solve some sort of mystery. And so they created their own improv skit, and they filmed it, and so Kayden, Jocelyn, and Aaron from the Higgins in the sixth grade were able to compete, and they ended up winning. They were coached by Kira Bresnahan, who participated in Destination Imagination when she was in school, and she's a 2016 graduate of PBD Veterans Memorial High School. So if we could have this group come up, please, we would like to give you guys some medals and honor you. Again, this is another group. They'll be the first to represent PBD at the Global Finals in June, so we're very excited for this group as well.
What's your name?
Jasmine.
Nice to meet you, Jasmine.
You got to hold.
Jasmine, congratulations. The city's very proud of this choice.
All right, you guys want to come up here for a picture?
Yeah, let's do it.
All right, great job.
I'll do Ted's first, sorry, Josh. Nice. We're good.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you so much. So just a little brief overview. The Global Finals is going to be a virtual event this year. It's held in June, and there's a four- or five-day period where they present the kids with challenges, they have to record the videos, and then they have to upload them, so they have a timed period. And then it will be broadcast online the entire event in July, the 22nd to the 25th, so we'll be able to see how the kids do. So, you know, in this crazy year, we really wanted to make sure that the kids still had the opportunities to participate, and they really came up and they rose to the challenge, they were able to participate virtually, and you really lead the way. So we're really proud of all the kids and all the work that they've done, and we're really grateful to our sponsors and our coaches who led the way as well. So Mr. Silva and Kira, thank you so much. All right, so thank you. And now I'll turn it back over to Mr. Mayor.
Could I?
Mrs. Dunn, yes, please.
Thank you. This program is absolutely wonderful, and I've often told people, this is really our gifted and talented program in the PBD Public Schools. It's wonderful for the kids because it encompasses so many pieces of what they need for the future, and it makes them think. And that whole skill of critical thinking is at the heart of everything that Destination Imagination does. The fact that we've got two teams going to the Globals, if I can try to explain how really huge this is, this would be like if a PBD Little League team went to Williamsport or the Super Bowl for the Patriots. That's, I actually think it's bigger, to be perfectly honest, because they have to compete on so many different criteria and against so many teams that reaching Globals is huge. Just reaching states is huge. Diane Bugler has been the director for many years, and Diane has done this for many years. When her children were small, before Diane ever became a staff member, she got into what was called Odyssey of the Mind, and then it became Destination Imagination. She has continued this program, and then eventually, as she became a teacher, it became part of our system really very well organized. And she's always encouraging people to coach the teams. So when the opportunity comes up, and this is more for the public, if the opportunity comes up to be a coach for your children so that they can be on a DI team, do it. It is a lot of fun. I did it for mine for many years. I dug out one of my DI pins for tonight, and honestly, it's just a great, great thing for your kids. It's learning, and it's fun. And personally, being able to sit here and see Kira as a coach, knowing that, she's on my refrigerator, in her pictures. I know, I can't believe that either. That doesn't seem possible. And she has taken her DI experience and has broadened it to include kids and keep this going, and I'm thrilled. And I also know that something people may not realize, when Kira graduated from PBD Veterans Memorial High School, she had a special tassel on her mortarboard, because if you participate in DI for a certain amount of time, I can't remember what it was, Kira, yeah, I think it's all four years, you get to wear a special tassel that's awarded to you at the local level. And at the local level, there are hundreds of teams competing. So just seeing that and knowing they made Global, this really is huge, and I'm thrilled and so happy for all of them, and really glad that our district still continued this. Even with the pandemic, the kids really excelled this year. And I asked each one of them, they all said they had fun, and that's the best thing.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And again, congratulations to all of you. The city is extremely proud of this accomplishment. It's terrific. So job well done. Thank you. Okay, let's go back to our agenda and minutes. We do have one meeting minutes from April 13th, 2021, regular school committee meeting minutes. Mr. Arnotis?
Motion to approve the April 13th regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Great, you've heard the motion by Mr. Arnotis to approve the April 13th, 2021 regular school committee meeting minutes, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Any comments? Roll call vote, please. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn? And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We have a couple of warrants today to be approved. Mrs. Carpenter, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant number 4747 dated April 27th, 2021, in the amount of $44,141.31, subject to audit.
Second.
Great, you've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant number 4747. That motion was seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4752 dated April 27th, 2021, in the amount of $853,314.10, subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval of warrant number 4752. The motion was seconded by Mr. Olympio. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
That is all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Under Continued Business, we have the Welch School MSBA project update. Any update, Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, since our last meeting, the MSBA did approve the schematic design for the Welch School, which allows us to proceed further into the process, and that took place the day after our last meeting. As of tomorrow, a small subcommittee of members of the Welch School Building Committee will be interviewing on Wednesday and Thursday four separate firms who have been chosen for final review as the potential construction management corporations. And those firms are going to be evaluated according to criteria that the subcommittee, as well as Doran Whittier and Denisco, put together onto a matrix. Questions are being prepared, and we've had input in those interview questions. And then after the interviews, that subcommittee will come to the Welch School Building Committee with a recommendation of the firm that we think would be best suited for the project. It's really something to see. Each one of them offers a different perspective on the project, and they have different recommendations on how to proceed because of the phasing on the project. So it was kind of, it's kind of fun to look at the different way people look at different things as far as the nuts and bolts of constructing that building and how they think it should go forward. And those are the types of things we'll be evaluating them on, whether their recommendations fit with what we need for our program as far as the grades that will stay in the building, movement of the students, movement of the office staff and everything to make it conducive to continuing the program while construction's going on, and making sure that at all times, it's a very safe process, that it's really something that's not going to interfere with the program that we provide at the Welch School, and at the same time, it will allow us to complete the building in the shortest amount of time possible.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Any questions or comments? Okay. We'll go to Dr. Fadala for his superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we completed the first item, which was our recognition of our Destination Imagination groups, and the second item is spring athletic waivers. So we just finished a very successful fall-two season. Our teams did excellent, and yesterday we began our spring sports. And as we had our kids come, and we waited a little bit longer than we typically do athletic waivers, because we wanted to make sure that we had everyone sign up. And so we were coming to the committee today at the recommendation of our athletic director, Mr. Buah, for two athletic waivers, and we'd need approval from the committee. So the first one is for our softball team. We have 23 players signed up, which is just too much for one team, but not enough for two. And so in looking at our youth program, we only have two eighth graders, and so we have a number of seventh graders that could also participate. So we would recommend applying for the waiver for seventh and eighth grade softball players to play on the JV team. So of the 23 players, they'll select the number of students for the varsity team, and then the seventh and eighth graders would be able to fill the JV team so that we wouldn't have to cut any players. We'd like to do that for softball. And then for boys lacrosse, they have 30 players signed up. And with the boys lacrosse team, they would be looking for probably about eight kids from the eighth grade to play up on the JV team, and so they would need a waiver as well to fill both teams. So I'd like to separate them both and make a recommendation, first for softball, that we apply for a seventh and eighth grade waiver to allow the kids in seventh and eighth grade to participate this year on the JV team.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Great. Heard the motion by Mr. Hockman to grant the waiver, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. On that motion, Mr. Hockman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to Dr. Fadala. We actually had some conversations offline on this subject. We, as far as I'm concerned, and I know that this committee, as it's currently composed, is all in favor of high school sports, and the more student athletes we have participate, I think the better. I would like to make this, you know, I don't know if it's a policy, but you know, a blanket approval for the athletic director to just notify us when there's a need for this. I mean, I think whatever sports need additional athletes to complete teams so that we don't cut high school students because there aren't enough of them to participate in a particular level. I think we all understand that high school students are going to have priority at the higher level, and to make JV or freshman teams, if we need additional students, whether it be for hockey, you know, I know that the boys struggled this year getting players, and I think that was partially because of COVID. I think that there are some other sports, and we talked about it, that are struggling to get some student athletes to participate. So I'm absolutely in favor of this. I broaden it if you would wish. If not, you know, we could take it up on a case-by-case, however you want to do it. But you know, for staff that's listening, for parents and student athletes that are listening, play, you know, go out there and play, and we'll continue to support you. You represent us well, and keep making us proud. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Any other comments or questions, Mrs. Dunn?
It's just on Mr. Hockman's point. I think tonight, I can definitely support these waivers. However, I don't think we can do anything at the moment without looking into whether that is allowed under MIAA regulations. I think, and this could be going back a ways, but I think that the MIAA was the organization that required that the school committee vote on waivers. So we should check into that before we make that vote. Also, before we make that kind of a commitment, I would like to know what the impact is at the middle school level, because I know that there's a discrepancy in athletics as far as what our middle school participates in and what other schools participate in the area. And I would like to make sure that we weren't taking students away from the middle school program if that was what was more appropriate for the kids. So there are a lot of different aspects to that decision that I think we need to know before we take a vote on it. Tonight's fine, but I think we have to have Mr. Buah and whatever we have here at Higgins looked at for the future.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman? Just on at least one of those points Ms. Dunn brought up. Historically, the Higgins has participated in sports in the fall, so as not to coincide with the spring sports at the high school. Baseball and softball, the programs typically take place in the fall. Unfortunately, for the last couple of years, there were no Higgins sports due to lack of interest from other middle schools in the region. But I agree with you, we certainly don't want to detract from sports taking place here. But historically, they were in different seasons even though they were the same sports. Okay, thank you. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Most of the members on this board have gone through the waiver process before, so we're all pretty familiar with it. Has Mr. Buah already, has the paperwork already to apply to the MIAA and is able to show the lack of the need for players? So that's all set. One of the things I do remember in the past when we've had waivers for the middle school is the advertisement of letting the middle school families and students know that it's available for them. So I'm not sure what fashion, former fashion that we're going to get the word out there. You know, I'm not sure how many people watch us. I know the mayor thinks it's millions, but it's really not. But if we could get the word out, because this is an amazing opportunity for some of these seventh and eighth graders to be exposed to that level of play, and I'm all for it, and you know, I respect Mrs. Dunn's position on checking to see if we need to take the vote each time, if you could look into that as well, because I know sometimes timing is a factor. So if we don't have to, I am in favor of the blanket, but if we have to, if you could find out for me, that would be great.
Absolutely. And in this case, you know, we go through this process, and I just wanted to show so that it's a transparent process of how we do it. We do consult with the coaches and the youth programs and make sure that, you know, we're not setting the kids up for something that they won't be successful with. And you know, our big thing is we want the kids to participate. We want to maximize that as much as possible. And they do have a plan. We just didn't want to go forward with any advertisement prior to the committee's vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Arnotis?
Yes.
Thank you. So that was for softball, and we'd like to do a second one as well for boys lacrosse for an eighth-grade-only waiver.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Hockman for approval of the waiver, seconded by Mrs. Carpenter. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Griffin Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is the district virtual school application. We wanted to update the committee on the process. Dr. Lord has been working diligently with a team of teachers and parents and families, so he's going to give a little bit of an overview, and he's going to talk a little bit about the application process. We met again with a team of people from the Department of Ed, and they gave us some feedback and some information about what our next steps are, and then the process of when a school committee vote is required, and then this will eventually, as we progress through, will go to the Board of Education, and Dr. Lord and I will present on that. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Lord to talk a little bit about where we've been and where we are and where we're headed.
Thanks, Dr. Fadala. I'd first like to recognize the efforts of this community to bring the kids back full-time in person over the last month and a half. It's really been quite extraordinary. And as the dust is settling, I think the analogy of finding a baby on the doorstep is what we've discovered as the silver lining to the pandemic. So I'm just going to very quickly go through where we've been. Many of you have been involved in some of these conversations already, where the design team is right now, and where we're headed. I love this quote from Emily Moore, "The teachers are finding their passion, and students are finding their way." And basically, this entire program is going to be establishing the future for our young people. Five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, we're going to be probably seeing more and more remote work at home to, you know, fight climate change, and this will be a way of life for people. I often use my cousin. My cousin used to work in Belrica, and he hasn't driven to work for 12 years now. He's been fully remote, and he's a global entrepreneur. He's working with people all over the world from his house, and he's been doing that for quite a while. So anyway, I think this will be the future. As many of you know, we have about 6,000 students here in PBD, and for the, most of the school year, 1,300 of them were involved in remote learning. There were more than 50 teachers involved with those 1,300 students, teaching them fully remote. The high school was unusual because the high school teachers taught remote every day to one group of the hybrid in person and the other group in the afternoon. So there has been a tremendous skill set developed in our teaching staff with respect to remote learning. All the staff, as you know, were fully remote on Wednesdays, and despite the fact that we're coming back in person, we still have over 800 students involved in fully remote learning. We had a number of community forums several weeks ago where we opened up to the community and said, hey, does anybody have questions about this? Made a presentation to groups of families with a variety of questions, and we started a great dialogue about what this might look like. We did an interest survey, and there are 500 families in PBD that completed that interest survey. And if we can go to the next slide, Dr. Fadala. This is the data for that group that completed the interest survey. We gave them a few weeks after those community forums to fill out their information, and as you can see, there's about 30 students in each grade, K-12, that have an interest in ongoing remote learning for the fall. Now, there was a level of interest associated with this survey as well, and somewhere between 250 and 300 students had a high level of interest in this, a level four, a level five. As this comes together and takes shape, this is the springboard for our conversation for what this for our conversation for what this might look like in the future. If we go to the next slide, these are the special services that the students needed based on this initial interest survey. And you can see the complexion of the students that will be involved in the remote school, very similar to where our students are now in the district at large. About 20% of the students have an IEP, 5% with a 504 plan, 6% are involved in counseling, and close to 70%, no special services needed. So they are a good cross-section of the community, K to 12, with respects to their needs. So first, I'd like to thank the design team. We have about 20 people. We have teachers. FKO is involved for the after-school and before-school element of this. And so I want to thank the design team publicly for all their hard work to help get this to come together. We started with a brainstorming session. We've met at a couple of times, based on the information we gathered from the forums and discussions we've had with remote teachers and remote students and families. We put together a draft of an application. The application was invited by the commissioner to all superintendents, and we decided to see where it would go in PBD. The draft of the application is almost complete. If we get any feedback this evening, we can include your thoughts in this application. Our goal is to get fully accredited at some point. Remember, the NIASC team went through the high school last year and was fully accredited at the high school. You can also get a district-level accreditation. At some point down the line, we're using those accreditation standards as a way to ensure the community there's a quality education program. We attended a district, a single district virtual school seminar with the State Department with, I think it was about 150. Other school districts were also involved in this. 150 other people were looking at this option. I think we're pretty far along for ours. We had two meetings with the Department of Ed on getting some initial feedback on our application. The application isn't due until next week, but we hope to get it out to them by the end of this week. The design team will meet one more time. If we could go to the next slide, Dr. Vidala? Design team's going to meet one more time tomorrow. I can give you a general structure of how this is going to look so families can be considering this option. The kindergarten through fifth grade students will experience a teaching and learning day very similar to the one they are now. School starts at nine o'clock, ends at three, about a 40-minute special during the day, and time for lunch and recess. The only difference is it'll be in front of a computer, and many of you have already been exposed to the elementary teachers who are doing a great job educating our elementary students. The middle and high school students will be set up in teams very likely. And again, it depends on enrollment. We're anticipating somewhere between 80 and 100 middle school students to be engaged with this, which would mean we would have probably four academic teachers, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. They'd probably do their teaching in the morning synchronously, and they, the kids would go to lunch, and then there would be a, an elective opportunity in the afternoon. The elective opportunities would be a little bit stronger than it is currently at the middle school right now, because Edgenuity is an online product that we've been using for many years that has lots of different activities that the students can do after lunch. That's typically where it's headed. The high school, very similarly, probably 80 to 100 high schoolers that might want to get involved with this. We would again have core subject instruction in the morning, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, and the electives again through Edgenuity in the afternoon. That seems to be where it's taking shape at present. We have a draft of a student-teacher-family compact that complements the existing student handbooks that we're working on that will outline how each student will have a homeroom teacher or advisor. There'll be a school day and a schedule, a little bit more formalized through that, and there'll be a combination of synchronous and some asynchronous learning for some of the students. If we go to, I think this is the last slide, yes. So our third design team meeting is tomorrow. You should know that Erica Sandstrom, eighth grade teacher here at the Higgins, has now acquired international fame as a social-emotional learning, educational guru. She's done some extraordinary things with getting people socially, emotionally connected remotely on computers. Some of the stuff she's done with students is just incredible. She's putting together a promotional video, which we hope to share for you in a couple of weeks. Our final application will be submitted, and we'll get some feedback from the State Department, probably within the next few weeks on that, and then bring it to you for a vote. We'll have some more solid numbers. We anticipate contacting families in the coming month, giving them a window of enrollment. They would, I'll get an email out to them with a link that would say, hey, if you'd like to be part of this, you can enroll in the virtual school. And based on those numbers, we will establish a remote teaching faculty from the existing pool of teachers who are currently teaching remotely on, at the high school everybody has been doing. If anybody has any questions, I invite contact me at central office. I'll be happy to fill in some blanks if people have questions. So that's where we are with it, and just wanted to bring that, bring you up to speed with it. We'll have some final application information for you within the next month.
Thank you, Dr. Lord. Any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Arnotis?
Thank you. Dr. Lord, that's fantastic. You know, I'm very excited to see what this application looks like. I think this is very forward-thinking, you know, as we adapt to what the working world's going to look like down the line. And you have to be realistic about this. You know, a lot of people in my age, in different industries, you know, my friends and I are all talking about what is life going to look like in six months. None of them are going back full-time to their offices, whether it's pharmaceutical or finance. They're all adapting in some way. And I think, you know, here, obviously, we do value, you know, the importance of being physically in person. But I think down the line, and you know, just listening to you talk, when you get to the high school, you could be at a point where you're having those core subjects remotely and then taking time at an apprenticeship, you know, if that's somewhere, a direction you want to go in. You know, I think often you hear people say, you know, are you preparing young people now for a career down the line versus just a standard, you know, K through 12 education? I think this is a step in the right direction to giving those skills that might be pretty valuable down the line. So thank you for this. I think this is exciting, and I look forward to seeing what comes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnotis. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you through the chair, Dr. Lord. As my colleague said, very forward-thinking, something that came out of the pandemic, I see, you know, something good. There are some silver linings. I'm definitely looking forward to where this goes, and I think that we're, we're helping the population of, providing a service that we didn't provide before. Budgetarily, I have a question for the superintendent. Is this a program that we previously, and if you don't know the answer yet, please, I'm sorry, but previously tuitioned out for? Do we have students that, because I believe there's programs out there that kids could enroll in, and then is this a cost savings for us?
So potentially, in the long term, we think that it could be. And right now, there are two Commonwealth virtual schools, of which we have about 30 students who attend those. So they live in PBD, but they attend one of these Commonwealth virtual schools. We would invite all 30 kids back and have a seat for them, and they could be part of the PBD public schools. Right now, there's zero single district school, virtual schools in the Commonwealth. We would be among the first. So we would invite those 30 kids back. Another part of the funding for this, because of the pandemic, we have received some grant funding that can go towards, it's a, it's a two-year grant that can go towards things like this. So this won't be coming out of the state budget or Chapter 70 or our appropriated budget. This will be fully funded by the grant money to get off the ground, and eventually, if we get those students back, it could be fully self-sustainable and completely budget-neutral or even save us money. So we think that we can sustain this for at least two years in the pilot phase to be able to get it off, and then we think that it could be, eventually a cost savings. It could be something where a number of students come back to us. We also have about 60 or 70 kids who are homeschooling this year that, in previous years, it was around 20 or 30. So we have a number of kids that did that, and we have a number of kids that went to private schools. So overall, we do think that there are a number of students in our district who this could serve, but also who are living in our community that might not be attending PBD public schools. We'd be able to capture them as well and serve them. It'd be just another way to serve our community. So of a district of 6,000 students, if 95 to 98% of kids need in-person learning, that still leaves somewhere between 200 and 300 kids, and we could serve them this way as opposed to losing them to some of these Commonwealth virtual schools. So I definitely think it's a great idea, and I'm really excited about the prospect. I know Mrs. Dunn's shared an article in, from the New York Times. So this is something that is really gaining some steam, and we want to be out on the forefront.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, is this the same type of program and situation where if our district offers something that a student is looking for, then we keep them no matter what? Say, some of our special need programs or some of our vocational type of programs, right? So they wouldn't go to another district, another school? We wouldn't tuition out? Would those 30 kids, I'm assuming they'd be grandfathered, but moving forward, anyone who wanted that remote, they would just automatically come to us? Or do they still have the, you might not know?
They have an option. So it is, it is like a charter school, so we have a number of kids that go to charters or choose to go to a vocational school or choose to go to a private school. There is that level of option, but I think that, you know, we feel as though we can offer a better product where they're connected to the community. We had nothing before, so they really had no other option. So we do think that we can offer a product that can really serve the community and serve a population of people. There are students who are outplaced for a particular reason, maybe they're schoolphobic or something like that, in a special education school. We would be able to meet their needs. Not all of them, but we'd be able to meet some of their needs. And again, it's just building that relationship with the families of really staying connected to the district, and that's really important to us, is to try to get as many families to remain connected and to meet their needs as we can.
You know, I think you're absolutely right in outplace. It's that connection to the community that they'll now be able to join in with. So thank you. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Yeah. I just, I did want to point out one last thing. The part of the brainstorming process was to come up with a name for the school, and we're calling it PBD Prep, Personalized Remote Education Program, because each student will have a personalized remote education program that will be designed for them. Each student will have a homeroom teacher or advisor, and, you know, maybe 20 to 25 per teacher. They'll be shepherding those students right through the process. So PBD Prep on the way.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mrs. Dunn, do you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This program, I know the bulk of the work that you're doing right now is coming up with planning the curriculum, the structure, the date, everything. But I also know that there's another component, and I really want us to be able to learn about it and discuss it. And that is the technology that's needed to provide this education. And one of the things that has come from our pandemic experience with the remote learning, talking with different teachers, one of the very difficult things, and I don't think many people understood, that teaching remotely isn't just different for the teachers as far as how they teach in class, but it's also that the equipment that's used can be helpful to being able to teach properly. A lot of colleges went through, even just a couple of years ago, to retrofit their buildings or new buildings to build classrooms that were fully equipped for remote learning. It's a very specific technological category. And one of the things that I wanted to look into and try to understand was what's different. And so everyone kept talking about St. John's Prep, how they went in with all kinds of equipment, and they fit their classrooms to be able to do a really fine job on remote learning, pivoting quickly. We need to do that here in PBD, and we need to recognize that need to do this well. And one of the things is that, in this room, there are cameras, and Jim Palmer can explain it better than me and put him on the spot. But the cameras follow us. We know that. It zooms in on whoever's speaking and shows it on the screen. For a teacher who's trying to work at a board, if they're trying to stay in one position to be able to teach to their class, and they're working off of, you know, the laptop or the Chromebook or whatever, that's very, very difficult. They've explained that to me, and I can see how hard it would be. When this building was built, I specifically requested that certain areas be equipped and wired so that remote transmissions could be conducted. So the wires are in the wall, but the equipment is not here. I don't think that's present in any other school. I'm requesting something at the Welch School. We're going to have the walls open. That's the time to put that in. But I know you're going to need more of that. And I think it's a really important thing to bring up when we discuss building a new high school. If we want to build a building for the 21st century, we have got to put the proper technology in for the remote learning. I'm wondering if there is federal money now that can be utilized to help get this off the ground as far as the hardware, the nuts and bolts. So if you, if we could have a discussion, you know, at the next meeting or a meeting after that, if you could get back to us with that kind of information, I think we really need to look at that. I think we need to push for that. And I think it's the right way to go because we know that this is the future. As Mr. Arnotis said, this is the future. And it's a, it's something we learned through the pandemic. It's a good lesson. And you have to look at what good can come out of, even in a very difficult situation. This is something that's really going to be very positive for students, because for some students, this may be the optimum way for them to be able to get a great education. And that's what we're always trying to do to, you know, every student, every day. They're all different. And for some of them, this could be a lifeline. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Amico?
Thank you through the chair. And I do agree with Ms. Dunn, you know, and with everyone else that has spoken. And thank you, Dr. Lord, for bringing this to us. On the hardware thing, through the chair to Ms. Dunn, and you're absolutely right. The only thing with hardware is sometimes it gets outdated. I do remember in Revere, way back when, we were one of the first districts to have smart boards. Those were the, those were the big things, and they're fantastic. And I believe here in the Higgins, I don't even think, do we even have smart boards? We do, but in some places, we just have the, you know, so it's different on the hardware as, you know, just like when you buy a computer, it's already outdated. Where we're probably looking at this program and thinking more software-based for our, our teachers to do their thing. And, you know, working remotely the last 16 months or so, I've seen so many different programs, some good, some bad, but the good ones are outstanding. And I can't even imagine what's coming down the pike, because there are a bunch of small, smart software engineers who are creating things as we speak right now. So I'm very excited about this program. It really is going to meet the kids where they are, both intellectually and emotionally. So thank you, Dr. Lord and Dr. Vidala.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Through you, Dr. Lord. Can you please go back to the screen showing the number of people that, yeah, this one. So on this slide, it shows 522 responses. Were those 522 responses of people that they would be interested in this?
What we did is we asked them to fill out an interest survey. There was, I think, maybe 15 questions. One of them was, what grade is your child in? And, you know, the address and email and phone number for all those people, we gathered information. We also asked them if there was any special services they needed. And one of the questions was, to what degree are you interested in doing this? There was probably a couple of dozen of that 522 that thought they had, they had to fill it out. And they said, I want my student to go back in person. So we're going to go back and follow up with those folks. The other ones, again, about 250 to 300, had a level four or five interest, which is, which was the highest on that scale. So now that it's taking shape, and we answered a lot of the questions during the community forums, you know, what would the school day look like? You know, who's my teacher going to be? And all these things that are based on enrollment. So, I mean, if we capture a few hundred of those 522, I think we're doing pretty well. I mean, we were anticipating maybe 100 or 200 kids, but, you know, if we can get to 300 in the first year, that would be pretty incredible. But that's where we started. Does that help?
No, thank you. No, I, I'm interested to see how many students and families want to participate in this, and I'm interested to see what it, how it changes our school district globally. Right? We have, we, the number of students we have isn't finite, but it's fairly consistent.
Yep.
And it's been consistent for 10, 12, 15 years, and I think projections are for it to remain consistent also. I think I'm counting 246 or 256 students from K to 5 of these 522 that are interested in this program, and I'm wondering, at some point, does this lead to another conversation? I'll leave that as an open question and not expect an answer tonight. I am interested to see how this all works. I'm not, maybe I'm less progressive than some members on this committee, but I don't think that this is the way of the future. I think we're leaving some kids back. I agree with Mr. Arnotis that people your age, people my age, people the age of Dr. Lord's cousin benefit from working remotely. We've gone through the social-emotional learning that takes place in elementary school. We want socialization of We want socialization of kids. We want, you know, maybe a pupil who is an only child and doesn't have a lot of interaction with other peers, to be able to sit in a classroom to learn about sharing, you know, a table or sharing a pencil sharpener, you know, some small things that we may be taking for granted. We do have students, I agree with Dr. Vidal, who are, I think you said school phobic is the term, and, you know, we all experienced either through our own children or as children, days where we were either our children or ourselves or our friends or other family members were reluctant to go to school for a variety of reasons, whether there was a fear that they didn't complete an assignment and didn't want to face a consequence, or somebody was bullying them, or somebody was, made fun of them or teased them. And these are learning experiences that our students go through on a day-to-day basis that this model, and I'm interested in it, and I encourage the pilot because I'd like to see how it turns out, but I'm not so, you know, ready to say that this is the future of education. I think that there are people who want this to be the future of education, and I think that there may be some small place for it. We do have some students that I think would benefit from it. If you asked me, you know, a month ago, or even, I mean, as we go through the pandemic, that there would be 522 students who have responded, that they would be interested out of, you know, the 5,900 or whatever we have in the city, almost 10%, I would have been astonished. You know, I would have guessed that it would be 120. I think the numbers we were talking about when this came up as a pilot were, you know, 120, maybe 160, somewhere along those lines. And that may ultimately be what it is. We don't know. So, I'm not, I'm not discouraging this from taking place. All I'm saying is that there's incredible value getting up every day, having to get dressed, you know, eat lunch next to someone who might be brown or yellow or white that you might not experience because, you know, you're living within a homogeneous environment in your home. And as a five-year-old or a six-year-old or a seven-year-old, you know, in K1 and 2, you don't have the ability to venture off on your own down the street to interact with a storekeeper or a neighbor perhaps. Not everybody has family that they interact with, and sometimes when they do, it's still homogeneous. So, I'm interested in following up and seeing how this goes, and, you know, I think we've gone into the, gone through the efforts of putting a committee together and running this through DESI and putting a pilot together. And, but I'm not, I do have reservations. I want to be upfront now, and I do have, for the student level, for the family level, and also to be realistic. You know, Ms. Carpenter asked earlier about the financial piece of this. Do we recapture students, and do we save money from students that we're sending out of district either into remote programs or other things? And I think she, I don't know that she asked this, but it sounded like, do we, are we able to tuition students in through a school choice type component? And I don't know the answers to that yet either, but I'm seeing, you know, a lot of numbers and a lot of empty seats in a lot of buildings that may, that I would expect would cause us to have a conversation about what the school district looks like if this were to be successful and flourish.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkman. Mr. Lepel?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Hawkman, I share your reservations. I'm cautiously optimistic. I appreciate there's certain segment of the population that has serious health concerns. There's some children that are afraid to go back to school full-time, and I am so grateful that we are going to have that mechanism in place, especially in the first, you know, few years. But honestly, it saddens me that this could be the future. I mean, this, I just, that's how I feel. This, offer those types of services, but like Mr. Hawkman said, I hope, again, I'm old-fashioned in a lot of ways. I just hope that, you know, a few years from now, that most of the children, most of the students are back in person, and we are sort of back to the way things were. But, you know, I'm certainly, I'm glad we're doing the pilot. I appreciate the hard work. Don't misinterpret that, but I'm not as excited about, you know, the future of this because I, to me, the social, emotional learning is getting rid of the masks and having the kids interact with their teachers, have the teachers smile at them, have other kids interact in person. To me, that's going to be the best tonic for some of, you know, these social issues that we're going to encounter. So, I'll be open-minded, I promise. And certainly, again, I've been wrong about other things, but I hope that two, three years from now, 99% of the population's back in person. But again, I do understand that some families have some very unique circumstances, and believe me, I'm very proud that we're going to have this type of service for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lepel. Mr. Amico?
Thank you, through the chair, and I do agree with. Sorry about the microphone. I take my own situation. In 2009, I was looking to get an advanced degree to further my education, and I had two very young children at home and a wife who was working full-time, a career woman who was working a lot of hours, and there was no way for me to go out and get an advanced degree. So, I researched. I was able to get an advanced degree online, 100%. So, it fit my need at the time. Now, was it the best thing for me? No, but I wanted to go out and get an advanced degree, so it really was the perfect potion at the time. And I really think that this is, this is an add-on to what we, to what we provide our students. It's, it's for that 10% or below. It's not for the 90%, you know. The one thing that I can, I can bring to the table here is I can tell you for sure that the pandemic and online learning was not great across the board, any district. It was, it was good. It was, it was the best thing that we could do under the circumstances, but there's nothing like in-person learning. I had a conversation with my own students today, and they just love being, you know, taught, you know, as Mr. Olympio and Mr. Hawkman said earlier, they just love being around their friends. They love being around their teachers, their mentors. And it's just a little bit different on-screen. But for this program here, I really think that this is something that, you know, we ought to try for two years if we can. And if there is a need down the road, it's just another way that we, we give kids an opportunity to get an education. We are one of the only countries in the world who educates every student. You know, some people, sometimes, you know, not to get off-winded, but sometimes people want to compare us to China or other countries, but people need to realize that in those countries, they don't educate every kid. We educate every kid, every student that comes through the door, every student that moves into PBD, we are required to educate them. And if we have an opportunity to do so remotely, and it's 5, 10% of the student population, and we do it successfully, then it's a win. But I'm with you, the two of you. I don't want to see this replace an education. I need a job for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Arnottis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I just want to point out, first of all, this is very substantive conversation we're having that's not about reopening or anything like that. So, I think it's nice to get back to a little bit of normacy here. No, just a couple of comments. I don't, I didn't want to give off the impression that I hope, you know, we have a remote school district someday. That, I, that was certainly not what I was talking about. I often look at some of the things we talk about here, you know, through the workforce development lens. And that was kind of my first thought when I hear this, and I think about where you go from there. Of course, you know, you want these buildings filled. I think, Mr. Amico, you said it, you know, that it's that 10% and probably a lot less than that. And I often think, if we can add as many tools in our tool belt around here and be as competitive with some of the private schools and other options that people have, we need to do that. And if this is just something else that keeps someone in PBD in our district, I hope it's successful. You know, those are absolutely valid concerns, and I know all this will be, you know, flushed out if this were to come to a head. But I do think this is just another thing worth, worth exploring. You know, the more options, the better. But I certainly appreciate that perspective. And I can tell you, as an only child who went through the PBD public school system, that socialization is very valuable. I can absolutely give you that.
Thank you, Mr. Arnottis. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask a couple of things. One, could we have the PowerPoint sent to us so we can review it? The other is, the, the whole thought of remote learning, even though it seems, you know, very, very new, or, you know, it's current, but people think it's very new. In 1978, I took two remote classes, believe it or not. They would, it was for college. And when I think now what it was like, it was, it was on television. It was in black and white. And it was a real different experience, and it was way back then. So, remote learning has been around. They've done all kinds of different things to make sure that people, that they can reach the students where they need to. And I do think it's good that we're looking into this. And I also know, one of the requirements from the commissioner on these remote schools, you know, it has to be approved. It has to be licensed by DESE. The students who want to attend remote learning will always still be eligible for clubs and after-school activities and sports, so that they will still be able to participate in all of the socialization that we do offer for students other than in a classroom, but that that is a requirement of a remote school. And that's one of the reasons why DESE is keeping control of these. People, the only way that someone can have the students' money, the Chapter 70 money, follow a student is to go to one of two of those virtual schools that are currently approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our program would fall into that. People can still sign their children up for other remote schools, but those payment arrangements are different. This is, this would be the PBD public schools, our curriculum, our rules, our staff, and our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Yeah, wow, this really turned into a conversation, right? So, I just want to say, this isn't intended as a debate. I agree with a lot of the points that my committee members made, but I do want to point out that this already is offered. Like, this is already a thing. This is something that our students can already do. So, you know, I'm really looking forward to see how many do participate. But, you know, it's happening already. And if we're going to be able to offer the program, and we're going to be able to try to draw them back to our city, back into some type of socialization by joining our clubs, that would be great. I am curious to see how many we do end up. Right now, you said we have 30 that are doing it anyway outside of our district. You know, what would be sustainable for the program to continue within our district, those type of things? So, we're in the early stages. I look forward to hearing more about it. And I do agree about, you know, not having complete virtual lives, like, that's just not the way to go. But it might help right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that spirited conversation. I won't call it a debate. I'll call it a conversation. But yes, I think that this is something that we'll continue to explore. And again, 98% of the kids will remain in person, and if we can help serve that 2% that we weren't maybe serving to the best of our ability, then that will be a good thing. The last item on the superintendent's report is some in-person learning updates. So, we've got some news from the commissioner's office that the close-contact quarantine guidelines have changed. So, prior to the vacation, the six-foot distancing and the quarantine was still in effect, and we did have a few cases, and I shared with the committee, and we had a number of kids that needed to quarantine. So, we did express our displeasure with that, with the, with the commissioner's office, and they have responded, which is great. So, students who are less than three feet will need to quarantine. So, if someone has tested positive in our school, and you're within three feet of them, which they shouldn't be because our desks are all up to four feet apart, they would need to quarantine. We will still notify people if they're in that three to six-foot range. So, we'd still notify them. They won't have to quarantine, and families can go and get tested, and families can make the decisions. So, we're working with Sharon Cameron in the Department of Public Health to make sure that we have the correct letters and things like that. So, this is just coming out from, from the commissioner today. And the three-foot distancing does not apply to sports, extracurricular activities, lunches, or when masks are not worn. But we do think that this will significantly decrease the number of close contacts that we have that need to quarantine, and so kids will be able to remain in school. So, we're very excited about that, and we're pushing out more information to the principals tomorrow and to our families in the coming weeks. But over the vacation, I had talked to Brenda Wolf and Sharon Cameron, and we digested some of the initial guidance. And as you know, more and more guidance is coming out, and so we continue just to work together collaboratively to make sure that we're following those guidelines and we're continuing to do what's right by our kids. So, we'll be sharing some of that with families. Some very exciting news from the nutrition office is that free meals has been extended for all students through next school year. So, that means that there's universal free breakfast and lunch for all of our students through this year and all through next year. So, they won't have to do free and reduced lunch applications. They won't have to, you know, fill out any forms, but we'll be able to collect all of the lunches and submit that for reimbursement from USDA. So, that's great news for our families. We'll be able to continue with the summer programming, for our summer meals program, as well as all next year. And then the final thing I wanted to talk about before I open it back up to the committee is the end-of-year events. So, we are planning across all of our elementary schools, fifth-grade moving-on ceremonies that will be in person, and we're working very closely. We may need to limit the number of people that attend, so we're working closely with Jim Palmer and PATV to make sure that we can broadcast all of those events again, so that extended families will be able to watch them on TV and stream them online. But we'll also make sure that we can get some of our fifth-grade parents into the schools for a moving-on ceremony. May do them outside, which might be a little bit better, depending on the size of the school. Eighth grade, the Higgins will also have an eighth-grade moving-on ceremony. They'll have an in-person component. And of course, graduation, there's more guidance. There was actually going to be released tomorrow, but we got a teaser that the students will be able to sit three feet apart. So, that is going to be able to bring them a little bit closer together. I talked to Mr. Magno today about that. And so, what we're anticipating is probably students three feet apart together as a senior class, which is something that they really want, two parents on the field or two guests on the field, and an additional two guests in the stands. So, we're looking to really increase that. We're planning a meeting with Sharon Cameron and the police department around the logistics to make sure that we have the number of people that are allowed and that we space everybody out. Probably utilize multiple parking lots and multiple entries and exits just for the logistics. But we're really excited to be able to increase the capacity for our graduation this year. And then finally, we have this nice Save the Date flyer that has been shared with our seniors. Lots of plans for the seniors this year. So, they have a Future Plans Day, which is going to be May 5. They have the Hypnotist on May 7, and they'll be splitting that up and doing two different shows to increase the number of kids that can attend. There's going to be a Powderpuff game on May 19. The Senior Parade will be on May 28. And then they're planning, I'm going to jump ahead because there's a big thing the last week. So, they're doing a senior barbecue in luau style on May 25. And then they'll have a whole senior week of activities on the 17th to the 21st. And then leading up into the graduation, on the 3rd, which is the Thursday night, there'll be a senior movie. On the 4th, we'll have convocation on the football field, similar to what we did last year. And then the morning of the 5th, a Saturday, we'll have graduation. And they're also doing tomorrow, they're doing a Panera fundraiser. So, senior class, they have a meeting with their parent committee tonight. They've been planning, really working hard to plan all of these events and really make sure that we can celebrate the seniors on the way out. So, we're really excited about that. And so, with that, that concludes the superintendent's report, and I'll kick it back to you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure there's some, some comments on this.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Any comments, questions for Dr. Vidal on the report? Mr. Hawkman?
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Dr. Vidal, on this last class of 22 senior events. Great to see that these events are being planned, and I know there's a lot of hard work and a lot of people behind the scenes doing this. With the guidance that came out today, and I know it's the 11th hour, but is there any possibility for any sort of prom, whether it be indoors or outdoor? I think the indoor capacity is 200 now, and the outdoor capacity is 250 or 350, something like that. Is there any possibility to even do an outdoor event with a tent or something like that?
There's always a possibility. So, we always have to make sure that we follow the guidance of the Health Department. So we always have to make sure that we follow the guidance of, of the Health Department. Um, in all likelihood, just to, to temper any expectations, it would probably be after graduation. Um, but I think that, uh, they've been looking into prom, um, and there's just, they've been hitting roadblocks every, every single time around, um, different venues and what they can have. Um, so there is a desire. Uh, realistically, I think we want to hold that June fifth date sacred for graduation. Uh, but there's always, there's always an opportunity, we just have to be creative.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mrs. Dunn?
I know that one of the issues with a prom is, um, the commissioner wants everyone to realize graduation is the pinnacle of, of, of your, your education. So they don't want anything to cause, uh, a problem for graduation. With proms, even though the number of people allowed to be in one place is increasing, one of the issues is the dancing. And that's, it's, believe me, it's an issue even with weddings. And a prom is not just a meal, it's the dancing. So that's one of the hurdles that they would have to get past. Hopefully, there'll be some more, um, you know, some more guidance on that, uh, but that, that's one of the biggest hurdles.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Uh, just a question through the chair to Dr. Vidal. What's the class size for our seniors?
Uh, right now, there's three hundred and sixty seniors.
Three sixty.
Three six zero, yep.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for that report, Dr. Vidal. Let's go to public participation. Is there anyone that has, um, indicated that they would like to be heard today?
So we have a small handful of people who are attendees. Uh, I do not see anyone with their hand raised. I did see a comment in the chat that has been noted and will be communicated around, um, there should be no tests and quizzes this, this Friday in observation of Greek Orthodox Good Friday, uh, which is consistent with what we've done, and I'll make sure that that gets out. Um, that was a concern of, of someone in the community, and we want to make sure that we do get that out. Um, but I'm not seeing any public participation.
Okay. Uh, we do not have any written communications today, so we'll go right to subcommittee reports. Uh, Education Subcommittee, Mr. Miko?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Um, the Finance Committee is just looking to see if we can get an update, if not prepared yet, as to a budget schedule.
Yes, uh, I can briefly, Dr. Vidal and I, uh, meeting tomorrow. What we'd like to do is kind of set up a, a schedule that we will present to you, um, probably online, and and set up some dates. But yeah, we're a little later than we want to be. Um, and that's just, again, COVID factors and things, but we're meeting tomorrow and hoping to have a proposed schedule.
Yeah, and and I did meet with, with Joe Scanlon, um, and and our budget team, and we do anticipate that we'll have at least a draft for you for maybe a subcommittee meeting on May eleventh, which is our next meeting, so in two weeks. Um, we, we would like to present a draft to the subcommittee on May eleventh.
Um, in regards to the subcommittee, just given that it's the, the late hour, it's a little bit different for us, um, I wouldn't be opposed to doing a full committee, it, rather than having the subcommittees. I think that generally, we're kind of into this already. The other thing I'd like to request, um, through you, um, Mayor, is if we could get the dates and work backwards, we usually have to figure out the hearing date and the, all the proposed budget and, uh, when we have to give it to the city council. If we could get those dates for the next meeting, and then we could plan backwards, and then go from there, and, and if the full committee would like to, to start, rather than just having the subcommittee start, I, I completely understand that.
That makes sense. I can get that information. Mr. Hawkman?
Thank you. And through you, I don't know if it's the Ms. Carpenter or Dr. Vidal, based upon the recent guidance that we've received from, I think, the governor and DESI, can we just get an update on our most recent MOU and and what remains in place and, uh, if we need to address anything?
Uh, School Safety Committee, um, Mr. Olympia? Okay. Athletics and Wellness?
Nothing new to report.
Thank you, Mr. Arnottis. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Parent and Student Advisory Boards?
Nothing to report.
Building and Grounds?
I would like to set up a meeting, if possible, before our next school committee meeting on May eleventh, to talk about the SOIs. I don't know where we are on that, but I'd like to, uh, if possible, if not, we can pick another date.
Yeah, I'd like to try to utilize that date to see if we can maybe meet at six on that, on, uh, for that committee and then the regular. So, um, yeah, let's try to make that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkman. Um, Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympia?
Nothing to report.
Okay. City Council and Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnottis?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Redistricting, Mr. Hawkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did have an opportunity to meet last Thursday, and, um, Mr. Caniston, who's come on board to help with the subcommittee, has told us and showed us that he's populated the software that I talked about a few months ago with all the students in the district. We're now working on, um, looking at various, uh, pockets and boundary lines for certain elementary schools to see, um, what, what it would look like as we move boundary lines or move pockets of populations. Uh, we are scheduled to meet again, I believe it is Monday, May tenth, here at the Higgins.
All right, thank you. Uh, next meeting is that May eleventh date, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we're looking to have a subcommittee prior to that, but, uh, we will advertise as required. Um, any agen, any agenda items can be handled in the regular course, and there's nothing further, Mrs. Dunn? Something to add?
Just two things. One, just so everyone knows, right after the students left, Mrs. Bugle got back to me. She's been involved with the Destination Imagination Program for twenty-six years. I thought, I wanted to let you know that. The other, I really want to thank all the people who worked hard to get these microphones. I hope you're enjoying them, and I want to thank Jim Palmer, Chris Mitchell, Brian Clondon, Dr. Vidal, Dan Doucet, Mayor Bettencourt. This has been a long time coming. I know so many times when I would give the Higgins update, I would explain that, yes, microphones are coming, and, um, they're finally here. And, and Jim's fear of, of electrical fire has now passed. And these microphones will do a, a lot of very different things. They can be used in many different ways, and they can be used throughout this, uh, throughout this building for different events. And, uh, really, they're, they're wonderful, and I hope it really helped. I'm sure it did. I, I could hear everybody tonight, and I, I think it really helped with, with that, with our meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. And with that, uh, motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you for a good meeting.[1788.53]